Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the July 6, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Galis will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge.
Most high, most merciful Lord, thank you for the blessings around us. Thank you for the rain, protect us, everybody from the storm, harm, workers. Protect all of our first responders and soldiers abroad. Protect our president and extend him travel routes he says he represents us abroad. And we wish you to dwell among us as we deliberate items for benefit of our county.
Would you please just apply United States.
Thank you, be seated. And if I could please remind you to please silence your cell phones. We do have all five commissioners present tonight. And at this point, we need a motion for an amendment or approval of the minutes from the June 15th meeting.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval? And I'll abstain since I missed the meeting that night. Motion passes four zero. Gentlemen, we also had a chance to review the agenda tonight. I don't believe we have any amendments or additions, so I need a motion for approval or amendment. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda? Motion to approve carries five zero. At this point in time, I'd like to read a statement for the record. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on July 18, 2017, with the exception of the two minor revisions which will be decided on at tonight's meeting. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Linda over here to obtain her request to speak for them. We're a little less formal in these chambers tonight. If you'd like to get up and give us some information or express an opinion either for or against one of the the public hearings we have tonight, we invite you to come up to the microphone and take three to five minutes to to convey your thoughts to the Commissioners for consideration. That being said, we'll move right into planned revisions tonight. Mr. Butler, file RZ 170706.
Sheriff's request, 5001 Gateway Boulevard for minor revisions and S1 special, which is a pavilion. Currently a place of worship. This is a location in the Gateway Boulevard out in the Gateway area of the county. Again, currently zoned S1. An aerial view of the of the site. And also the plat showing its ten acres. The applicant is showing where they're going to put the pavilion. It's a 720 square foot structure, we'll see here in a minute. It's going to be adjacent to their retention pond here. And essentially, they're going to use it for outdoor activities, basic things like that. And then we do have a photo of the proposed building, again, 720 square feet. And also, again, this is a pretty minor request, again, this was a minor revision, and staff does recommend approval of the request.
This is not a public hearing, so gentlemen, I'll need a motion to approve, table, or deny.
Chairman, I move to approve. File 706.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ 170707.
Sheriff's request at 3924 Old Furious Ferry Road for another minor revision. This is also a place of worship, currently zoned S1. The revision is to permit a temporary classroom on the on the on the site. Location of the property, again, on this is Furious Ferry Road, on the north side. And currently zoned S1, I believe it was rezoned in 2008, then with revision last year for a new synagogue, this is owned by Shavat Luvovich. This is aerial view of the site, again, existing structure. We'll see here in a minute, there's site plan, previously approved. This is a plan of the property. And the site sketch, this is the the new synagogue here. They are going to, they do, they want to have the trailer, or the classroom structure, for some events in September or so. And they want to convert it into construction trailer for this project here. They're looking at two to three years, it'll be placed out there. And also have parking, which will be for the existing structure and also the proposed classroom structure. Staff does recommend approval of conditions on it. I think it's just a sketching here. The parking here is shown, then the the buffer, that will need to be moved out of that buffer when it comes down to actually constructing parking. Again, staff does recommend approval of condition with the stated or with the proposed parking.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, this is a, is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to either approve, deny, or table.
Here, I make a motion. With condition, file RZ 1707. Request for minor revision.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. And I've got a little technical difficulty, I've got a dark screen here. Yeah, where's where the on button is, and if I touch it, it's liable to blow up in my face. All right, and we'll move into the public hearings tonight. Mr. Butler, we're still with you, file RZ 170702.
Sheriff, this is a planned revision to existing planning and development off Blue Ridge Drive. The request is to revise the narrative to replace professional uses of residential duplex use. The applicant has submitted them as single-family residences. Per our code, they're technically two-family because they are attached. That's kind of where there's a clarifying that. This is the location of the property. This is Evans Locks here, and this is the subject parcel. Again, currently zoned planning and development, parcel to the north is zoned C1, and also to the west. And you have the existing puddle which surrounds it to the south and also east. An aerial view of the site, again, it's a little over a half acre. The site again, currently. This shows the plat of the the original planning and development. Again, this is supposed to be two professional lots here. Have at the back, the single-family residential. It's shown as being attached, it was built as not attached, except for these two units were attached. A little, little slightly different from the other plan that was originally proposed. This is their proposed revision. The applicant has proposed in four units, which are 1,750 square feet worth of space. And it has a little over 5,000 square feet of community space, which would be basically everything but the the actual buildings. They also have 10 parking spaces, two per plus two extra that are for visitors. They have 10-foot-sized setbacks for the front, and also a landscape strip on the front. The applicant has has, with their narrative, has said it will match the existing planning and development. There's a future land use. This is kind of where we had some concern from the beginning. It is potentially twice the density in this area. And that is four units per acre, this is eight half acres. However, there are townhouses, that's a townhouse density. There is that. There are townhouses here and here, and also, this is part of an existing puddle. This was, for instance, let's say they were wanting to do this elsewhere, we'd have a little bit of difficulty to do something like that. However, with it being an existing puddle, and also being very close to other townhouses, or other things that have that same density, we are comfortable with the request. Staff does recommend approval of the request to revise the puddle to from resident or from professional to residential duplex. That recommendation.
The public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Could you come forward and give us any more information you'd like us to consider? Please give us your name and home address before you get started.
Davis, I'm the owner of Jim Davis Company. On the property there. In December of 2002, had the Lakeside Landing subdivision approved. Single-family lots, patio homes, two professional lots. As it turned out, the professional lots basically, I think the problem is that the lots are too small. So therefore, we're requesting change, change in the puddle from professional residential. Now, we've worked closely with the homeowners at Lakeside Landing. I'll read you a paragraph in our narrative. Because the architecture is to do existing houses in Lakeside Landing. Exterior are to be siding. That's already out there. Each dwelling includes a private fence guard, patio, exterior forage, and will face away from Blue Ridge Drive, away from any commercial development that may occur on that large corner lot. I think it's a good fit for the property and
All right, sir, any questions?
Where are the garages?
These units do not have a garage.
Okay.
Questions?
Professional use. 500 square feet. If you, in other words, what you're saying is you had
We, we've worked with a doctor for a little while, and it just, not enough parking. Had a couple other people.
Wasn't, it wasn't the fact that you couldn't build parking to support.
Exactly. By the time you do the setbacks and quiet parking, it just wouldn't have been big. Professional is picking up flow after flow.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? If they're none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Here, I'd like to make a motion, approve, file RZ 17-7-2. Way it is.
Do you hear a second? Discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. All right, Mr. Butler, you're still a rock star tonight, file RZ 170701.
Sheriff's request for rezoning at 767 Furious Ferry Road, from R1 to P1, for real estate office property is 3.58 acres in size. Location of the property, again, it's on the north side of Furious Ferry Road, it does have furniture on both Furious Ferry and Hartfield. Currently zoned R1. Pretty much everything around it is potential. R1 to the north and also south. And across the street, you have R2 and also Elton. And aerial view of the site again, currently. Also the plat. In terms of the the development itself, the proposal was for a real estate office. The applicant has stated that he wished that it looked like a house and that it would blend in with the property, or blend in with the adjacent property. From staff's standpoint, that's really the only way to make something like that, something like this work in that area. So they did present a site plan, and also a very nice-looking building. However, there was a lining project, kind of came and dashed some of those hopes. This is the front of the property here. And that large oval-looking structure there is a very large retention pond. That's going to take up 180 feet of the front of this property. And kind of found out late in the game, and applicant has requested to withdraw the request due to that retention pond. In terms of future land use, again, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the future land use as it is, as it's currently written. However, with the modifications that were proposed, it would have been a good fit. Unforeseen. Retention pond that are requesting to draw. That request is a fee waiver, so again, something that, you guys still have to have a recommendation, had to go to the board. That includes staff recommendation.
Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone, is the applicant here? I don't, I don't see Mr. Jones. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this? I'm assuming we need to go ahead with the public hearing if there's anybody here that would like to speak. Yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
3857 Sullivan Hartfield Road. And we are already blocking in there so much at Sullivan Hartfield Road because we already just got, you know, new houses are being built right down the street there. We can hardly get in and out of our street now. And to put a real estate office right there on that corner, I think that's just going to block us in more. In the morning and in the afternoon, we can hardly get out. It takes us a while to get out onto Furious Ferry Road if we are going left on Furious Ferry. And I just don't think that we need to have any more any more buildings there that are not residential. That's really supposed to be a residential area. I know we have one property in there that got in there somehow, but it's residential.
Looks like you're going to have a retention pond there as opposed to a real estate office.
I would like to have anything there except all these big buildings sitting right there on that corner.
Right. Well, DOTs will take most of that property, it looks like, when they widen the road, so.
And the road is already, I mean, you know, you know how congested the deals there in the morning and afternoon. So I, I just don't see us putting a, you know, a real estate office right there on that corner.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate you coming out. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular issue? Yes, sir, please give us your name and home address.
Anderson, I live at 949 John's Road in Augusta. I've owned property there. Like the last 20 years. When I bought that property, there was a pub right there. That property has been zoned commercial at one time, not just on a PMM drive. And since we're going to be widening the road, I just cannot see residential going into that area. That because it's padded back. Don't think. Property will just be sitting there. Nobody will develop that property.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and give us your home address, name and home address.
My name is Alice Subler. I live at 779 Furious Ferry Road in Evans, Georgia 30809. And I don't understand, everything is on the paper, while I'm here, I need answers, and I want to ask questions. I don't understand what you're talking about rezoning. And I do understand they playing on widen the road. If they widen the road, I don't see where it going to help us any. For one reason, from Evans Lock, service station where my church is, Gospel Water Branch. Sometime, late in the afternoon, it takes me an hour to get to my road to make a right-hand turn. We do not have a red light there. And on the other hand, in the morning, I'm sitting there from 20 minutes to 45 minutes to make a right turn or left turn, which I call is unfair. And then, on the other hand, if y'all widen the road, I feel like it going to be worse for us. And we got children who is not able to speak. Some of us have children, the school bus have to pick up. They have to sit there too long to be on their job to get the children to school on time. And on the other hand, I'm a member of Gospel Water Branch Church, but facing the fire station. I want to ask it all now because I'm up in age and some of it will go away. Are y'all going to take part of Gospel Water Branch Lane? We're in the road now. And I don't understand, when I was a child, they say, work, have some of your own. And then when we get something, I'm in my family house. How do y'all come control to say, we need this much lane? If y'all get in more lane, it's in my front door. Jones Creek is right across the street. Our mailbox was there. When Jones Creek came in, they moved our mailbox, nobody said nothing to us, and put it on the other side. And where that side, the mailbox, there where the cars go. Mailbox here, let it gullit go there. And the only way to get your mail, you got to stand like that and come in. Then get really in front of the mailbox because you're getting knocked out. And on the other hand, I want to know, is y'all playing on putting a red light there? I don't know whether I'm in order or out of order, but I'm just asking question, is it coming to me? And I need answers.
Okay, ma'am.
And I'll need to know what you mean by rezoning. I don't understand what you mean by rezoning.
You're not talking to the right group that can answer some of those questions?
On here, but with me, I don't understand it all.
Okay.
And you have to ask the question in order for one to be answered.
Second, and I'll try to help you. Okay. First off, no, please stand up here for a minute, we may want to ask a question to you or want some response from you if you don't mind. Okay. This is a Department of Transportation widening project. This is, if I'm not mistaken, it's all state money or do we have federal money come in?
Federal money.
Okay, so the county really doesn't have a lot of input on what they do. They're exercising a thing called right-of-imminent domain, where a government entity can come in and condemn property. It's actually happened to some of my property on Furious Ferry 2 with this widening project. And honestly, there's not a lot an individual can do about it, right, wrong, or indifferent. That's something that was set up by the by the federal and state governments a long time before you and I were born. As far as a red light, I don't know if there are any red lights that are, that have been applied for. There's a thing called a waiver based on traffic counts and accident counts. I don't know, that, that's another gentleman named Steve Castle that would have to answer that question. But all this body does is we hear people that want rezonings or variances or variations, and we have to determine what the highest and best use of that property is. Mr. Jones came in and he wants to put a business there. It sounded reasonable, but the DOT is going to take most of that property to put a retention pond on that property. So to be able to build something of of the of the size that he wants is not going to work there. So it will have to be something in the future if it's ever built on, and I honestly don't know what somebody else will want to do. I'm sorry your mailbox got moved, but again, that has nothing to do with us, I'm assuming that's a Department of Transportation call where they locate those things. I'll be glad to put you in touch with the local DOT member here. A guy named Don Grant, I'm a very reasonable guy, and if you've got a problem there, he'll be the kind of person that'll listen to you, and I'll, I'll make this promise to you. You can't get any, any help with it, I'll be glad to call him for you.
I can, I can, I can try to answer just a couple of them.
Okay.
So if you look at that screen in front of you there, this is Furious Ferry Road. This, this is, this is heading north on Furious Ferry Road right there. So this is Sullivan Hartfield Road. This is that pond that that we were just talking about, taking out most of that property right there in the corner, that that will prevent him from, from putting that business on that property. Most likely, from what this plan shows, there will not be a red light at this intersection. And that's, that's just because it, it sounds like DOT just doesn't think that a, a red light at this location is warranted. That's not saying that that's final firm, but they just don't think that that, that would benefit have a red light at this location. Now, as, as far as, to answer your question about Gospel Waters Church.
Yeah, that's my church.
Yes, ma'am. Most likely, there won't be any right-of-way, additional right-of-way required. That, that area
Part of it been widened.
widened years ago when the southern part of Furious Ferry was widened. Most likely, no right-of-way is going to be taken. Now, there may be some utilities that get moved a little farther back on the property, accommodate some stuff they're doing farther up the road, but most likely, the right-of-way is going to say exactly where it is.
Think by widening the road out, this is going to help any?
It'll, it'll, it'll help move a lot of volume, that right now has two lanes to go into, north and south. Going to help move a lot more people, they're going to have more options. That, that hour and a half bumper-to-bumper traffic happens right now, it's going to be a lot shorter, that widening happens. So I, I think in the long run, it will help.
One other question, it's very important. People's are going around now scamming you. Do y'all send peoples out, the Newton farm on, and they come up in the yard, in the yard be saying they doing work with the road and everything? Are they supposed to come to you doing, address themselves or what? That's very important for me to know.
Ma'am, I would imagine if there aren't any folks out there doing stuff like that, like you're talking about, their survey
There's a lot of peoples coming up in the yard with a big truck, some of them do not have a sign on. And they do not come to the door and say, well, I'm out here to do this or do that, and I just want to let you know I'm out here. Some peoples come out there and they just go in and look around and don't say nothing to you, and then they gone back. And to me, it's unfair, you don't know who is who these days.
If they're on your property, you have a right to find out who they are and why they're there.
That, that's right.
And, and I can tell you, as somebody that's been affected by this, the only thing that I've seen, I've gotten two letters, and I've seen some flags on the back part of my property where the surveyors have been on there, but I haven't had anybody come up to my house and tell me that they're doing anything. But you, you have the right to ask them who they are and why they're there, and you have the right to ask them to leave your property.
Now, we'll add too, if, if anytime you're not comfortable with anybody on your property, whether they look like they're doing something official or not, feel free to call the police. Call 911, say there's, there're folks on my property, you can at least get a clarification that way.
Yes, ma'am. And, and don't leave before you see me because I've got some phone numbers I want to give you, okay? I've got some phone numbers I want to give you before you leave. Okay, yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Here, I make a motion. File RZ 1701. Approval of withdrawal. Discussion, waiver with
Do you hear a second?
I'd like to change that if you don't mind. Just to change it to a recommendation.
Okay.
I'll admit my emotion. Date. Move.
Yeah, we recommend
We recommend.
That can still hold?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. All right, last item of the evening, Mr. Butler, file RZ 170703.
Sheriff's request for rezoning at 5141 Columbia Road, from R1 to C3 for proposed self-storage facility. This is a property in question, I get on the north side of Columbia Road, right now from the intersection of Lewis and and currently zoned R1, pretty much everything around it is zoned R1 or puddle as residential. There's some commercial here. Again, the aerial view of the site, again, it does have an interesting shape that we'll kind of be discussing here in a minute. Property. This is a site sketch, it's a little hard to tell on this. The request is for a self-storage facility, so you have here the office, and then you have multiple buildings throughout the site. They've, they've said it's going to be self-storage, but also they may have some outdoor storage, build this in phases. Originally, staff looked at it and said, well, this is, doesn't really fit the top plan. Again, this is supposed to be a residential area. Again, this is supposed to be a residential area, um, but it is very close to a community crossroads. Um, so there is some, some credence for, uh, further. Um, one of the benefits of this site is the shape of it. Have residential properties here, also have Tudor Branch, uh, creek that runs next to it. Um, so there's all, there is some natural buffering, uh, from the road and also adjacent properties. Also see through your cars, a forty foot structural buffers, even further buffer there. Then also, you do have this section here that's visible from the road, and that's pretty much it at the moment. It lends itself very well to, uh, this, to a self-storage facility type development. Um, so staff is, uh, looking at this as an approval with some conditions. Uh, one of the biggest ones is that we do want to limit it to only self-storage use. Um, C three, C three is essentially C two with some little higher uses, um, for instance, this sort of thing that is more of a kind of a commercial type use. Um, so what you don't want is say, yeah, you can use C three here, then have it be something different than what they would want to us. Uh, so we do have a condition that, that limits it to only self-storage use. Uh, also with the buffering, uh, the buffers is required around basically the whole property, it's forty feet. Um, would like to keep a lot of the existing trees. They totally hide this thing. Uh, so we do have a condition that thirty feet of that buffer is to remain undisturbed, ten feet on the internal side can be disturbed, it has to be re, renovated. And also a condition, uh, with lighting, which is fairly standard for this. Uh, in terms of future land use, again, this is in the Evans, um, neighborhood areas, which technically does not allow for, um, these types of uses. However, it is at the, the community crossroads, which is here, does allow for commercial, then also current uses that support commercial and residential. Our opinion, self-storage facility, the, a use that can be close to something like, in this site, about perfect. That's really where we're basing our recommendation, based on the shape of the site, where it's at, limiting the use. Also having a large natural buffer here, and also the residential here. Um, where we're get, where, where we're coming from in terms of the recommendation of approval. Again, uh, the use is limited to self, self-storage, that's section nine dash one forty-seven, and as well as the buffer and outdoor lighting. And so that recommends approval of condition, of recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff?
Fencey?
That's required. Uh, the structural buffer is going to have to have a fence. Also, if you're at the screen, you're not going to be able to see the building.
How, what kind and how high?
It, uh, it's a twenty foot, it's a twenty foot structural buffer, uh, the fence can be high and very. Also has trees. Bar, self-service stor, or self-storage should be.
Say twenty foot, does that include this south, south fence that's next to the homes that are on, that are on Columbia Road?
That's actually forty feet.
Forty foot.
In, any adjacent residential is going to have a forty foot, but it's going to be a forty foot around three sides of it.
And, and what type did, type of fence?
It's, um, typically it's going to be a privacy fence.
Priv, privacy, or like, like a wooden type fence?
And typically, if, if, what, what, typically what they're going to do is they're going, their buffer, fence on the end. That doesn't make sense, rather than clear out just for the fence. Um, that's likely what they're going to do in this case, again, with that requirement or with the condition. curb section, they can't even go into that thirty feet, kind of uh, from the actual buffer itself.
This is a public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come up and give us your name, home address, and any additional information you'd like us to consider?
Roman Waldera, forty-nine twenty-eight Herford Farm Road, Evans, Georgia. Um, we'll pretty much spell it out. All the adjacent property owners. They all signed affidavits and I put it in. And the project going in there. Um, have another project that we're working on ahead of this on Gordon Highway, off the ground first, so would be probably about it.
Got a similar project?
Yes, sir. It's at the entrance, uh, it's between gate one and two at the Havens subdivision. About, just about the same size.
Third, don't you have, don't you have one existing, one under construction in this one?
Yes, sir. We, we haven't broke ground on the one on Gordon Highway. We, we almost have a final approval.
Okay.
City, but that was our first one. Had a project we were working on.
I was under the impression, I already had, had one, one self-storage facility up.
Also.
Roof, okay.
This will be our second one, and we just happened to find this perfect location that we thought was a location close to self-storage around, is going to be back towards I twenty. Uh, there's one in the center of Grove Town. I twenty and Bel Air Road, so nothing servicing the community in this area and all the residential houses that are going in out there. You got, um, some new neighborhoods going in on Herford Farm Road, and we serviced the community, Bell there, all the residential.
Are you going to have RVs?
Well, our intentions are to be mainly climate controlled, probably sixty-five, thirty-five climate controlled. But we will probably be building this in at least two phases. Um, really aren't looking to do a lot of RV storage, but while we are building it in phases, back where we have the retention pond back there, we, we were thinking that, you know, when we're between phase one and two, if somebody wants to park a RV or, or, or a boat back there, paying that, based while we have it available, but eventually we want.
The, um, office, is that going to, uh, have a site manager on it? Is that a residential office or?
Um, you know, we were thinking about that on Gordon Highway, putting a, a residential, uh, a residence above the office, but we scrapped the plans to do that, and then on this one, uh, we, we honestly, we haven't, um, decided, but we would probably lean not to have a residence there. Two residential structures on the site now, and we plan on renting those structures until we're ready to break ground.
What will the office look like, do we know?
I don't have, um, yet to the office, um, I can have my, my, draw something, my architect draw something up if you'd like, but, uh, I don't, I don't have any.
We'd have to do that anyway, right, Andrew? They would?
Right, yeah, as, as part of the building plans, and, and they'd have to have a architectural rendering.
But we want to do what the county would like as far as, you know.
I think, doesn't, wouldn't the county like to see something that kind of matches the, uh, the development, the adjacent commercial development with the food line and?
No, I think so. I think something, something similar with those materials, you know, it's got a mix of, uh, masonry, um.
That, is that doable on your own zone?
Absolutely, when it comes time for the architectural drawings, you know, county's advice. Um.
Partner over there.
Is he shaking it like this or like that? I don't think I've seen a, um, a wooden privacy fence and, you know, it's going to be behind the forty foot buffer and it, it's either, no, I've seen some chain link with some slats going in there to kind of block it out, and that's kind of, you know, that's kind of what I had envisioned. So, um, I've only seen it a couple of times, and I don't know what the name of it is, but it's, it's like a chain link with some
Our, um.
Got some kind of
Plastic slats that slide through.
Kind of weave through there or something.
Slide through.
Blocks it out.
Blocks it out.
That would definitely.
Our ordinance requires that it just be opaque, so, uh, there's a wide gamut of what can be opaque, because, because the vegetation contributes to that too. Got to be some sort of fencing, um, along the front of the property at least, we'd want to try to lean away from chain link with some slats in it, maybe something a little more decorative. But, you know, along the, the back where you're really not going to see it, uh, we could, we could talk about options with time.
But, but on, on that, on that note, most storage facilities have these huge metal gates that you can open punch a number into. Not typically. So does that mean that they would have to have a wooden decoration?
Uh, if there's a driveway or, or access to the site, obviously that's not, that's not required to be buffered completely. Because more decorative options that you can see from the road. Perhaps a step above chain link fence, barbed wire on top, um, but.
Would there be barbed wire on top of fencing that goes around the perimeter? That, is that pretty normal?
Well, I would like to secure the barbed wire for just for security purposes on there, but if, you know, if the county says they don't like barbed wire, then we won't put barbed wire, but.
Oh, I don't.
No, I, that's what you need to do to secure, that's not.
We definitely want to make it secure for our customers.
We've got, we've got lots of options to discuss. We've got lots of time to discuss them, it sounds like.
Yes, we do.
You guys are willing to, to work with us on aesthetics, you know, I think we're on the same page.
All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion. Prove file RZ one seven zero seven zero three with condition. I also like to add form of on the back of the residential lots. Coverage.
So, is you want more opaque fence on the residential side?
Gotcha.
Your second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Have no legal matters? Uh, do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Well, we had some public here tonight, any public comments? Would you like to come forward and, so, a comment or two? Kind of shy crowd tonight, all right?
You're just here to have fun?
All right, seeing that, I will, uh, accept a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Go here second. Okay, all in favor? Motion to adjourn at six forty-one, passes five zero. Next meeting will be July twentieth at six P M. in these chambers.
Good luck with your pursuit, Don.